This regular meeting of the Leon County Board of County Commissioners is called to order at 3:03 PM on May 11, 2021. Today, we're honored to have with us today Pastor Benny Bolden of the Family Worship and Pray Center providing the vacation. Pastor Bolden?
Just a brief remark before he gets started. He probably expected this from me. I've worked with Dr. Benny Bolden at Fort Braden School. Great leader of young men. Proud to say that he serves saving souls in two capacities, kind of the same way as I do. He's a pastor, as well as the principal at NIMs Middle School down off of Orange Avenue. So, he's a hardworking man every single day down there taking care of the same children that we share back and forth. They'll spend a week at Fort Braden and then get tired of my shenanigans and head off to Dr. Bolden.
And then come back.
That's right. Good to have him here today. Thank you for being here, Dr. Bolden.
Appreciate it. Let us pray. Gracious and kind Father, we thank you for your continued covering you have given and shown your people. Even in the midst of this global pandemic, we can still declare that you are good, righteous, and just. From the beginning of time, just as you was with your servant Moses, you have given us governors, state rulers, and city legislators the authority to enact laws and decrees that rule over our everyday lives. Keep us secure and keep us safe from the threat, harms, and danger. Today, we place our leaders before you at the feet of your throne and acts that you grant them courage and patience to lead, that they prioritize every move with the overabundance of love. You have assembled this group of people from various walks of life, cultures, and today, we fortify and surround them in your favor and your grace. Bring people with strong moral character and spiritual maturity to them. May they hear your voice above all those in the many voices that call out to them every day. I pray God that you inspire and talk to our leaders through the influence of your Holy Spirit as we look to them for assurance, direction, particularly in these times of crisis. Bring them closer to you by revealing yourself to them. Bring them closer as only you can in your own special way so they can hear your still small voice. Speak to them about the importance of honesty, dignity, and justice, and equity. We pray that you continue to lead us toward noble goals in which they stand for within the office in which they hold, with the ultimate goal being to serve we the people, to redress wrongs and to make the world, our state, and city a better place. Give each of them the courage to reach out to others on the other side of the aisle to collaborate. We confidently pray that you will tie their hearts together in unexpected ways. Let them exclaim, as King David did, how good and pleasant it is when God's people live together in unity. Bring strong, wise, spiritual, mature people to surround them. Speak truth to them through your still small voice, in which we all can trust. Give them wisdom to reject the voices of those who urge them to seek only personal power and glory. Let them know deep in their souls that only with you and through you is the victory that we all shall win. Only through your power is our country, our world, our city made whole. Today, we understand all is driven by your wisdom and devotion. Please accept our prayers for our city and its leaders and your goodness. Keep an eye on those in the position of power so that all can enjoy equality, protection, and harmony that you demand. We make this request known to our Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much, Pastor Bolden.
Commissioner Jackson, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the people who are always standing one nation, under God, in the world, with your children and his.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Commissioners, as you know, we've had some suggested changes to the agenda. In addition to one that, an additional item pulled from consent, like to pull item 14 and 15 from the consent agenda, and then item number 28 has been added and placed at the very beginning of general business. In other words, before Agenda Item 22. Are there any objections to these agenda modifications? Seeing none, we'll proceed. Commissioners, we are now at our awards and presentations. Mr. County Ministry, would you please introduce the first item while I make my way down to the podium?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, under awards and presentation, we have a proclamation recognizing the world-class schools' best and brightest awards by Chairman Miner.
Great. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Just wanted to congratulate these incredible students within our Leon County school system and throughout, you know, all of the county. This is a proclamation that recognizes their academic excellence. Whereas, among the thousands of students approaching graduation from Florida high schools, there are many seniors who are extremely worthy of recognition for their achievements throughout their scholastic careers. And whereas, these achievements include an active commitment to academic success and being diligent students who approach learning as the pathway to the future. And whereas, another dimension to student achievement among some graduating high school seniors is a track record of service through school and community, representing a long-term and selfless commitment to others. And whereas, in Leon County, this combination of qualities, academic success, and an ethic of service are at the heart of recognizing the community's best and brightest graduating seniors in public and private high school. And whereas, for 16 years, this wonderful program coordinated by world-class schools of Leon County Incorporated has properly honored young leaders for their inspiring example and the impact of their good work and others. And whereas, for 11 years, this program has hosted an essay contest for eighth-grade students in Leon County who have been learning about civics and forming their interests in community service. And whereas, investing in education is a principle that all Floridians can embrace, for every community should engage in programs and activities to nurture America's children into being the best and brightest in the world. Now, therefore, be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that today, we honor the finalists for the 2021 Best and Brightest Awards. And then there are about 400 names that are listed as the Best and Brightest Award recipients, which is a testament to how talented and dedicated to public service our students are. So, congratulations to everyone who is a Best and Brightest Award winner. Thank you all very much. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the next item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just scrolling through the technology here. Next up, we have a presentation on the 2021 Chamber Priorities and the Community Scorecard. On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, we welcome Jay Smith, the chairman of the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Dozier.
I think, Jay, if you don't mind for just half a second, I just want to thank Laura Rogers for your dedication to Best and Brightest. We talked about this the other day at our community council at WFSU. You were telling me how alumni recognize you and just celebrate the program years after being a participant. This is huge for the students, and thank you for your efforts. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. I was about to do the same thing. Laura and her team, whether today as an intern, Emma Cypher, the two of them have done an amazing job, and it all comes to a celebration here this week. So, thank you very much to the two of them. They've done an amazing job working with all of our school system to recognize those students. So, thank you again. Well, good evening again, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Administrator. Thank you for your time today. I'm Jay Smith. I'm chairman of the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce, and with me also is our president, Sue Dick, who's served this community for over 20 years in this role. So, we want to come here today to really just provide an update, to talk to you all about what's going on in this community, all the amazing things that we're doing together. As you all know, some 14 months ago, we all were hit upside the head with a pandemic that none of us could ever anticipate. So, you as a county commission and us as businesses all really had to take a look at ourselves and really determine what was most important and what we needed to focus on. So, from that, we kind of had already started taking a look at what best practices county chambers were doing around the country, and this really added a focus to what we were, what we needed to look at. So, we kind of retooled our mission and our vision. Our mission is to lead and promote the success of business, driving a higher quality of life for our community. That's something that we all can stand behind and push forward. And then our vision of a diverse and strong regional economy where businesses succeed and the community prospers. So, those kind of gave us a real, you know, a light to where we needed to be shooting for. And then we really started looking at some of our strategic priorities and really where we wanted to focus our areas on, on talent, on economic competitiveness, and then community prosperity, which is a newer focus for the chamber, and allowed us really to start looking at what we wanted to do. And for me, in this first year of my chairmanship and then going forward, and we really started looking at what we wanted to have focused on as a community scorecard. So, this information is information that is readily available, that OEV is a major contributor to this information, DEO and the Florida Chamber. But we wanted to really call out specific information that all of us can focus on, on a community basis. Every single one of us can rally behind these 12 key metrics as we push forward. This is something that we're working on a monthly basis with the Capital City Chamber and the Big Ben Minority Chamber. We're also working with NEBA on some of these priorities. So, again, it's trying to break down those silos and really start together and work to. So, this is something that we've met on a regular basis with Vince and Reese and Superintendent Hannah pulling us all together and let us really start focusing on these areas. So, the top line is business-centric and jobs-based, which is something, again, we all can rally behind with a focus on private job growth. We all know coming out of this pandemic, this is something that we're all striving to do, is put people back to work and also a focus on minority businesses, the number of businesses we're creating. So, that's another big key focus that we are working closely with Mr. Jones on and making sure we're supporting him and promoting the businesses, getting certified and getting the opportunities in our project sector. The next line is education. We all know it all starts at the education level, and the earliest signs for us to be able to be focusing on as a community is the kindergarten readiness school. And of course, the CSC passage really is going to drive this number. But again, it's something that as businesses, we really wanted to start to really engage and play a vital role in driving that kindergarten readiness. So, when they show up to school system, they're prepared, just like every other student. So, we're at 62% right now. This is something that we all need to strive to 100% attainment in our community. And one of those things is something we're going to roll out on June 1st that we're very proud of. We're looking to adopt every single kindergarten in Leon County school system via business. And what does an adoption mean? It's time and it's resources, but most importantly, it's engaging with that principal or that teacher in each one of those classrooms and making sure you're developing a personal relationship and we're focusing on those students and giving them the attention needed. Then you follow through, of course, with third-grade reading scores, the high school graduation rate, and something that we all need to focus on as the jobs are evolving in our community is the post-secondary attainment rate. This is something the governor's focused on. It's something that we're pushing close, you know, pushing on with both Lively and TCC is what are we doing to develop trades and knowledge so that our community can be not only getting their, a job, but a job that allows them to develop a wage that promotes their family and allows them to sustain. And then the final, the final line is on that community and prosperity line, making sure that our community has the livability for every single one of our individuals in our community, based on poverty rate, the crime rate, and then the GDP of our community, which is something that we should be very proud of and we should be celebrating, is the fact that over $16 billion of GDP is created from our community. So, again, so this is something, again, we want to communicate on a monthly basis, and we plan on coming back to you all on a monthly basis to kind of update, update us and all of us to focus on moving these numbers. So, a few other things I wanted to focus on to update you all on, on the talent workforce education standpoint. The Chamber worked through the grant from OEV on creating a new Talent Hub portal. This portal allows businesses to load in the opportunities that each one of them have, but it also allows people in our community to, a place to post their readiness for jobs if they're looking for a job. And then it connects a number of not-for-profits that are supporting the job basis of workforce development on training and on education, and it's connecting all of those dots, which in the past, there's been several great programs, but not everybody, not even the businesses know all of the programs are out there. So, we're connecting all of those groups together. A great prime example is a project that I'm personally involved in my company, where, as you all know, we've been selected to build the new Tallahassee Police Department headquarters. So, from that project specifically, my subcontractors are loading in all of their opportunities, and we're connecting all of those employment. And then we're giving them not only a job, but we're connecting them with Career Source and with Tempo, and we're connecting them with Lively and TCC to give them the training necessary. So, it's not just a job, it's a career. And our industry specifically needs that technical training because we have a real deficit in our industry for the trades and our workforce. So, this is something that's really important. That's a great example. In addition, we recently worked, Access Tallahassee, which is our younger group inside of the Chamber, has worked closely to work with the graduating seniors to complete their FAFSA, the Free Application for Student Financial Aid. The goal is to increase completion rates by 5% in Leon, Willculla, and Gasson County. May 17th, one of three virtual sessions to walk students and parents through step-by-step process, where we're going to have financial aid experts from FSU, FAMU, and TCC online to answer questions. So, again, if you can visit talchamber.com to get more information there. Next, on economic competitiveness and business climate. So, a number of you have engaged with us, engaged with us. Commissioner Miner, Chairman Miner, you sat in with the Business Advisory Committee last week. Thank you very much for your engagement there. We continue to work together to look at the job creation and creating more jobs. Next, I wanted to recognize all of the work, the IA, you all specifically, what you're doing there, on the importance of the blueprint projects and the economic significance of key projects in our community and the jobs they're creating. So, the infrastructure work you're doing today, we're just, you know, seeing a lot of the benefits of Blueprint 2020, 2000, sorry. All of that work at Cascades is a great example of what we've done as a community. So, what you're doing with the next round of Blueprint 2020, we're going to see the benefits of for years to come. So, thank you for all of your hard work and dedication there. Another key component is what OEV has been doing with supporting existing businesses and then driving new business to our community. So, thank you. We're working closely with OEV on a regular basis on updates and our support there. And finally, as we talked about, community prosperity, what we're doing there with the Best and Brightest Awards, again, as we recognize tonight, we got over $55,000 awarded to our youth, specifically thanks to Saks Media and Envision Credit Union and the Tallahassee Democrat for their support. Access Tallahassee has created, the Chamber's young, has created a little libraries in communities across. So, they're building and putting up small libraries in walkable areas of our community. They're being supported. So, they're really engaging in areas and making an impact, starting at that youth, at that younger age group. And finally, is our launch, launching of Prosperity Leon with the goal of lowering the poverty rate. So, this is something we're engaging with several different entities, again, that have all been kind of working in different silos. We're trying to bring everybody together to really push the Prosperity Leon forward. So, thank you for your time. Thank you again for all of your leadership. You guys are, worked very hard through this world and glad to see all of you in person. The Zoom does not do it like when we all can meet face-to-face and get the work done. So, any questions? Thank you again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. I've got a couple Commissioners I would like to speak. I've got Commissioner Cummings and then Commissioner Welch. Mr. Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say briefly, I certainly appreciate President Smith, Executive Director Sue Dick, and all of the hard work that you guys have done. I am very impressed with the community's scorecard. And while I appreciate your holistic approach to the community, I'm especially concerned with the educational aspect. Being the Commission's representative on the Children's Services Council, I certainly appreciate the kindergarten readiness aspect on the community scorecard, which also follows our children all the way to through post-secondary. So, I just want to commend you all for all your hard work. Not that I'm excluding the workforce development or the employment aspect of it, but I'm certainly gratified and encouraged by the monthly scorecard that you guys will be keeping. And hopefully, the Children's Services Council can fill some of those gaps as relates to the readiness of our kindergarten children. So, thank you again. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. The kindergarten readiness is kind of like the Blueprint 2020 infrastructure we're putting in place. That's going to, we're going to see the impacts of that down the line. So, it's, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. I've got Commissioner Welch and then Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jay, thank you for the presentation, Sue. Thank you all for being here. I just want to brag on you for a second. I think the kindergarten thing, to echo Commissioner Cummings, is a tremendous, a tremendous effort. I think that's awesome that we're going to get the business community to sponsor every kindergarten class. I think as somebody who knows a lot of kindergarten teachers, big time important that we have those kind of synergies and that kind of support from the business community. And then, secondly, I'm going to brag real quick on Cory Melton, okay? Because at Childs, I've coordinated a business advisory council for a couple of years, and we've worked real closely with Cory. We want to connect our students specifically at Childs to the workforce development things and jobs available in the community. We always have a hard time finding placements for our students for externships and things like that. I have had, or I have seen the Talent Hub presentation a couple of times, and Cory does a great job with that, and that is a phenomenal tool. If you guys have not seen it, all of our students at Childs have access to it via our ClassLink system where all their gradebooks and all their different tools are. It's really cool. I mean, it is a really cool thing. You want to talk about a one-stop shop, a sort of aggregator of a lot of valuable information for a teenager or an adult who's looking for a job placement in coordination with the Chamber. So, I think that's a great tool. I want to commend you guys on it and all of your work as it relates to the scorecard and trying to move us forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. I've got Commissioner Jackson and then Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Jackson?
Yeah, I would just say ditto to capture their remarks, but as you look at the boxes, I encourage folks to realize that the way you move the needle in that lower left-hand corner, the Leon County poverty rate, is everything about the middle row there. When we talk about kindergarten readiness, when we talk about third-grade proficiency, kindergarten readiness will lead to higher levels of third-grade proficiency, and hopefully, you, through generation, will lower that poverty rate. I say this, serving a school community where 49.6% of the students that come to us each day are from a home that is living in poverty. That's one out of every two. If you want to make a difference in our crime index, in the property crimes, violent crimes, all of those things that are on that bottom row, then you have to start very early and even before kindergarten, as Commissioner Cummings talked about, and also as we're focusing with the efforts of the CSC. But thanks so much for the report, and I'm glad to see that that's a really telling report when you can relate those boxes from one to another. So, thanks.
Yes, sir. It's, when we started developing it, Commissioner, it was, it started with three, three different pages. And so, we, there's so many numbers, but we focused on, I mean, they're all so interconnected with one another that you can't pull them apart. They all stand, they're all intertwined. And so, that's, it's a great point. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Dozier and then Vice Chair Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the report, Jay. It is very interesting, although I am regretting leaving my glasses in the back. So, I'm just going to admit that publicly here. If you could send us, yes, I saw you, so I knew you would understand. I'd love to see this. I'm sure you're going to send it out to us, and if it's a monthly report, that is fantastic. Did take note of the phrase that we've talked about for years and years, breaking down the silos, but I'm not sure I've ever heard the top line of a report say you're working with the other two chambers. And I just want to compliment Tallahassee Chamber for that, and thank you, Sue, for your leadership in this. I really appreciate the involvement of all three chambers, particularly in the last year, and the partnership with OEV at, you know, during this year, but beyond that as well. So, thank you for that. I concur with all the comments about education and your focus on young folks. I love the kindergarten classroom. I might have gotten a little tip about that last week, but I kept my mouth shut until the announcement. So, I love that. But on the training programs particularly, because you have the Talent Hub, you are engaged directly, obviously, with businesses, and I'm going to focus on construction because that's what you know and you highlighted. I think, based on what I hear when I talk to businesses, there is a role for a place to get some good feedback about the, those training programs. Are they applicable to what the businesses are looking for? The apprenticeship question, I know the state's working on that, the governor's talked about that. But I guess I'm curious, if you are digging in a little bit more, you're connecting people, but are you going to use this to kind of draw out some of that feedback that may help us, may help others who are providing that training going forward?
So, the thought is... So, so the thought is, there's several grants that businesses aren't aware of that support when they hire somebody, that they're, can be trained, and they actually will pay for several weeks of their employment upfront. So it's, it's allowing them to take chances. So we have instituted on specifically the TPD project, we are striving for a 10% workforce that comes from some type of government assistance program. So connecting with the housing authority, connecting with the sheriff's all-in program, bringing people back into the employment that typically aren't hired, but we're, we're working with the police chief on who can work on that site. So we're giving people second chances. And then at the same time, focusing on an externship program. So we're setting up a specific office on the site that is allowing us to bring in speakers to talk about the training opportunities, to connect them with Tempo, for the opportunities to go back and get their GED. I mean, engaging all of these different programs that allows them then to go get the training. So again, foolishly for me, I was unaware that TCC was having the commercial driving program. And so again, it's, it's breaking down those silos and, and communicating that information. We all get stuck in our, you know, in our lane, and we run as fast as we can, as hard as we can, and we're trying to do everything we're doing right. But there's a lot of people out there that are, are willing to help you and make you more efficient. And so those are the type of things we're just trying to, as I indicated in another one of these, that if I did anything this, in my year of chairmanship, is to eliminate as many silos as possible. So yes, we can communicate, and if we, if we have, we impact 20 people's lives from that project specifically, that's 20, 20 successes that we need to celebrate as a community and continue on and do it in the next projects. But it starts with the first one, and then we'll, we'll build from there.
I appreciate that, and you can't do everything at once. You have to start and see how the programs developed, and you're, you're right. I mean, everyone's moving so fast, we may miss an announcement about one more training program. So I think that is really helpful. I think just in our economic development conversation, talent training programs come up all the time. So I think the chamber is a perfect vehicle to give us some feedback on if you see a gap in the training. If you can't find a program or something else like that, we're working with all the same partners. So I appreciate that line of communication and just look forward to seeing what you all do. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Vice Chair Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Chairman Smith. To Talasi Chamber, your presence today and the service and work that you do across our community. I recognize and heard the jobs component, and I believe you do a good job with the summer program. And last year, we suspended the program which we have done here at the county for a number of years due to COVID. And as the emphasis for children coming out and lining up with a job, but I fundamentally believe, if I ask your indulgence of something more fundamental, and that is a basic business literacy, the kind of stuff that many kids who are in that 20.5, that bottom corner that Commissioner Jackson lifted up, how many kids know what a buyout means? What is a merger? What is a stop? What is Dow Jones? What is the business index? These are fundamental American life principles, which are so sacred. They're just like the Bible, not included in the curriculum of public learning. And it's difficult to think that in the midst of two schools, business schools here, great chambers here, that our children are segregated in learning about the fundamental, just the language stuff of business, as they are familiar with speaking Russian in public schools. It's just not there. Is there any way that we could get past this sacred divide? And if your homes and your home life does not expose and equip, and it's in America, it's the sacred domain of the home to teach and expose children to business for those homes that are unaware. And civics is falling quickly in that same category. And my wish and hope is that, and I would love to see, and I'm willing to roll up my sleeves to work at, a 101 curriculum. Because when you bring, and they used to take us children out to the airport and show us the airplane and the cockpit and all of that, and we had to go out there on the field day. But we had nothing as a precursor to arriving there to look in the cockpit and what a flight is and aeronautical sciences and all of that. And I would just ask that it would be a benefit if our children knew what a corporation is, what a LLC is, what agency means, and we just don't have that. And if we could do something radical, like introduce a curriculum of, it's not vocational, it's just business, that kids that don't know what a credit card is, a credit score, a beacon score, they don't know how to buy a car. That's the stuff. And I would hope that this commission even would be so committed to the development of our next generation, as for them to understand more of the basics. I would be one commissioner would be willing to put money for a curriculum integration with our public schools. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't feel remiss if I didn't have anything to say. Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you so much for your leadership, Chairman Smith. I think the things you brought to the table today, and especially as Commissioner Dozier said, the thought of continuity and working together amongst the three chambers is huge, something that, that frankly, I think will, will benefit this community in a huge way. As you all know, my biggest concern is, is the MWBE piece of it, and he was moving in the right direction there. He spoke a lot about the trades. You, you said you guys were adopting schools, which is, schools and classrooms, which is actually absolutely awesome. Somewhere around probably my generation, I'm thinking, there was this movement for us to move past the trades and past community colleges and going straight to college and getting, getting into a suit and, and working in that, in that manner. That perception still exists amongst the children that we have in school today. And no matter how much we as parents and adults say to them, there's opportunities out there in the trades, they're not quite ready to receive and accept the fact that that's there. Two things that, that I would ask you guys to move in, in, in the direction of, one would be, as you adopt those classrooms and, and, you know, talk to those kids, expose those older children to folks that may be a part of the chamber who are in the trades, to, to explain to them what that lifestyle is like, what it yields, the type of lifestyle that, that they, they can attain from it, and, and what it takes to get there. What they'll find is, is it's a much shorter timeline to get, to be an entrepreneur or a good-paying job as a welder than it is sending us a CEO of a construction company. And so it's just the mere exposure to those things that will move those children in that direction. The other piece of it is, and this is me putting on my chief elected officer of Career Source, is, is there some kind of way the chambers can start to work with Career Source to create more opportunities for apprenticeship? There's money out there, as you all know, for, that, that Career Source has that can pay those kids, that, those adults and children to get involved in apprenticeships. But what Jim has told me is that oftentimes it's hard to find businesses that will invest the time, because it does take time, to, to get those kids and adults involved in the apprenticeship and that kind of thing. And so as we move forward, those are the two things I ask that you will focus on. I like the direction you're moving in. I'm absolutely excited about what you're doing and good to see you standing before us and having this conversation with us. I believe in your leadership, I believe in your board, and I believe in those other chambers and what you guys are going to do together in moving our, our, our business community in the right direction. Thank you.
Career Source is one of the entities that I was speaking about, but didn't call out specifically, and they're, what they do for training, and they have the grant to be able to pay for that individual's salary for, I think it's up to 320 hours, I believe, is correct. So that is giving people the incentive to, to work with Career Source and take a chance on that individual, and it's tremendous. And I was unaware of it, and I feel like I'm pretty, pretty connected in trying to engage with a number of entities, and I was unaware of what Career Source could do. And so it's exposing all of, all the subcontractors on those projects, and it, it just grows. It's one at a time, but I, I completely agree, agree. If, if we could, if every kid coming out of high school could have a skill regardless if they're going to Harvard or Florida State or not, that skill will stay within the rest of your life and always have something to fall back on.
All right. I say one last thing. I, when I was in high school, we had a program where they were teaching Oracle, this is back in the nineties. And I, I actually got the certification, never used it, but I did get the certification. And I just, I know it's going to take time investing to those children, and you don't know if, at the end of that 320 hours, if they end up going anywhere or not. But what we do know is that they'll be able to use what they learn into attaining a, a career. And it may not, may not yield best for the business, but it'll yield best for the community, no matter what they end up doing. So thank you so much for moving in that direction. I appreciate your leadership.
And Commissioner Proctor, I agree with you as well. That's, we're starting with the kindergarten, that engagement with the students to at least start a dialogue, let them see businesses care, let them see the businesses, and hopefully make a little bit of an impression for them there. But we need to continue on. I don't disagree with you. But our hope is that is the first start, and then of course, jobs, providing more job opportunities. I think those are the two big dynamics. But I, I agree with you. We need, I mean, all, all, all middle school and high school students need more of a focus on basics of what, what this country is founded upon and what makes it so dynamic.
Amen. Thank you. Chairman Smith, thank you so much for, for coming today and presenting this. President Dick, thank you very much for your leadership as well. And Director Rogers, thank you for everything that you're doing at the chamber and with the Best and Brightest Awards. Very grateful to all of your work as well. Um, you know, I, I, I'm not going to reiterate what other people have said. I'm gonna try to pare it down, but I really want to thank you and your leadership in the chamber for putting together the scorecard. As you said, it forces us to, to kind of take away some of the silos, because you can see the scoreboard and, and see how interconnected, scorecard, and see how everything, how interconnected everything is, and, and start to think about what we can do as a community, not just one chamber, not just the three chambers, but all of us as a community to help improve some of these numbers. You know, you and I have talked about the importance of improving the job market. And the job market, improve it, when you say that, that means different things to different people. And it can mean multiple things at, at the same time to somebody. So I mean, it could mean cultivating a magnetics industry cluster, you know, in and around Innovation Park. But it also can mean importantly, what can we do to reduce the income inequality that we have, the, the equity gap that exists, that's very real and, and, and very serious in this county. So I want to thank you for, for the scorecard and for the discussion that you're having with the other chambers and other partners to truly make this a community-wide effort, because your goals are also very commendable and laudable. I mean, getting poverty down to under 10% by 2030, reducing crime rates to, to rank as the lowest 10 in Florida. I mean, those are very ambitious goals, and that, that, we need to be working toward those. And the best way to do that is community-wide by taking down these silos. So thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anything else? All right, moving on to the next presentation. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the next item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It's that time of the year again. It's time for our overview on the upcoming 2021 hurricane season. With that, I'd like to introduce our Director of Emergency Management, Kevin Peters. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Administrator, and good afternoon, Commissioners. This afternoon, I'll provide you an update on the outlook for hurricane season 2021, which begins on June 1st and goes through November 30th. Additionally, I'll provide an update on NOAA's definition of a normal hurricane season, which has changed for this year. But first, I'd like to provide a quick review of last year's hurricane season in 2020. It was a record-breaking season with 30 named storms, 12 of which made landfall in the United States. Five storms made landfall in Louisiana, breaking a Louisiana state record for landfalls. Here in Florida, we had two impacts. We had Sally in September, which made actually two landfalls in Florida, one in South Florida near Miami, and then one in the Panhandle near Pensacola. And we were hit later in the season in November by Ada, which was one of the Greek names that were used during the tropical season last year. It was the only, the second time in history that the National Hurricane Center has had to use the Greek alphabet. The first time prior to that was 2005's hurricane season. The reason for all of the activity in the 2020 season, we were experiencing a La Nina pattern, which created less wind shear across the Atlantic, coming from the west at the higher altitudes. And we also had way above average Atlantic tropical sea surface temperatures. Now moving into the 2021 outlook, we again are looking at an above-average hurricane season. Some of the early forecasts that have come out from various entities are showing somewhere between 15 to 22 named storms are expected this year. Seven to 13 of those could become hurricanes, and of those, two to six could become a major hurricane, which would be a category three or higher. The National Hurricane Center, which is part of NOAA, which is the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, they will release their official forecast on May 20th. So that will be the official forecast from the federal government. But as you can see, we are expecting above-average activity. And again, the reason is that La Nina is continuing as we head into the summer. It may fade through the later part of hurricane season and into the fall, but the effects from La Nina will, will be around for the entire summer, influencing our hurricane season. And again, we're also seeing warmer-than-average hurricane, or sea surface temperatures in the Atlantic even right now. So those two ingredients will set the stage for unfortunately, another busy hurricane Now about the change to the definition of what a normal hurricane season is. NOAA has introduced updated climate normals for all of their weather products. Their climate normals are based on 30 years of climate data, and they update it every 10 years. So we had been working under a, a climate normal definition that spanned 1981 to 2010. That was the last update. We're now working under a timeframe of 30-year average between 1991 to 2020. So what that means now, starting this year and for the next 10 years, a normal hurricane season will be 14 named storms. Seven of those could become hurricanes, and of those, three could become a major hurricane. Compared to our old climate normals of the, the 1981 to 2010, a normal hurricane season was 12 named storms, six hurricanes, and three major hurricanes. So we are seeing a very slight trend to more, more active hurricane seasons based on this new climate data. NOAA states that this may be attributed to, and one, one thing may be an overall improvement in their observation platforms. In the last several years, they've launched several next-generation weather satellites to give them much better resolution of the atmosphere. NOAA also says it may be attributed to warmer oceans and atmosphere, which are influenced by climate change. They also attribute, attribute the possible increase in, in normal activity or the increase in atmospheric normals to a, a positive phase of a weather pattern known as the Atlantic Multidiscal Oscillation that's been in place over the last 30 years. That was not quite as famous as La Nina, but it's a, it's a, it's a weather pattern like La Nina. It's very large-scale, and it affects the sea surface temperatures of the North Atlantic, again, in spans of 20 to 40 years at a time. Now unfortunately, all of this data and information doesn't tell us if or when a storm will hit our area. So we all must be prepared. And we continue to stay prepared here with Leon County and Leon County Emergency Management through updates to our Disaster Survival Guide, which will be released later this month. We've continued to push our Build Your Bucket messaging through all the county's communications platforms. And here in Emergency Management, we continue to do training with our staff and our partners on topics such as incident command, search and rescue, shelter operations, damage assessment, as well as our Emergency Operations Center operations. Again, we do all of this, keeping COVID in mind and integrating guidance from CDC into our our plans for operation. Again, hurricane season starts on June 1st. It's expected to be above average. We don't know if or when Leon County will be affected this year, which means we all need to be prepared. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my comments for today.
Thank you very much, Director Peters. Uh, I've got in the speaker's queue, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Director Peters, Kevin, for your, um, annual update on our hurricane season. But, Mr. Chair, I don't think we can start today without acknowledging that our Emergency Operations Center has been active for 421 day, actually 22 days. Forgive me, we don't have today's update out yet. 422 days continuously, and you had a hurricane season in the middle of that. Uh, thank you. I just want to say thank you. Um, your efforts and all of our team, um, McVell's in the audience as well, Mr. County Administrator, the entire team is to be commended. I hear this throughout the community all of the time. So I just wanted to recognize that because you could have a very busy summer. We all could, and it's coming on the heels of the most extraordinary year any of us have experienced. Um, with that, I only have one question. Um, and I wasn't sure if you were going to mention the normal average and the update there. Um, I took note, I think, when NOAA put out some of this information, that the, um, there was some change that took, went from a 30-year average to a 10-year average. And that was in, uh, rain total volumes, flooding, things of that nature. I'm pretty sure, Mr. County Administrator, this was something that I think was, you know, related to other policies and other county work. Um, but I just wondered if there was any discussion about sticking with that 30-year average or hurricanes versus going to a 10-year. And if you don't know, that's just fine. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding this policy change.
Yeah, Director Peters?
Yes, sir. Uh, for, for hurricanes and hurricane seasons, it will be the 30-year average, um, from 1991 to 2020. They will use that as their climate, uh, average, and we will have that for, uh, the next 10 years. It'll be updated in 10 years from now.
Okay. That's just fine. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. It is a different subject with stormwater. Um, but I'm, Mr. County Administrator, I'm just using this opportunity to say I, I think that is something interesting to look at, and, um, it may have impact on some of our policies or be some, something like that. So, okay. Thank you, Kevin, very much for all, all you've done and will do in the coming months.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Uh, Director Peters, he passed the test. Um, listen, next on the speaker's queue, we've got Vice Chair Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you for your report, Mr. Peters. Uh, this comment goes to the, uh, based on the information shared, um, I think I heard that there is a continuing, uh, realization, uh, that, uh, we have increasing numbers of storm event. Um, number two, there's great expectation and anticipation, uh, potentially of our community being impacted. Um, you mentioned the word climate change, and I'm not sure if, uh, if that's been forbidden, the word that's, we can even channel, uh, into in Florida, if it's not been outlawed by the legislature yet or governor. But notwithstanding, science is recognizing, and our reliance on what our scientists are saying, uh, that these events are becoming harsher. These are the realities, Commissioners, which, uh, underscore my continuing concern with our permitting, um, mobile, uh, homes, uh, in our county. And it's not that we're, uh, saying that our county is above mobile homes, but increasingly, we know the, uh, safety issues. And when these storms are named and when, uh, there is indication that it may come to our area, among the first things that, uh, we hear is that all persons who are living in, in, in mobile homes, uh, should abandon and find somewhere safe to live. Now, among the top three things that is said when we have hurricanes, one of the top three things is that persons who live in mobile homes need to leave. And if these events, storm events are going to continue and climate change is going to, uh, foster greater velocity within those storms, why would we, uh, continue to permit, uh, or allow the expansion of something which is dangerous? And when the wind rises above 50 miles an hour, uh, we're telling citizens to get up and, and leave. Uh, those are the issues which I think that as a county commission, uh, should temper, uh, our, our, um, concerns with that, that category of housing. And secondly, uh, that unit of housing is one unit of housing which actually depreciates in value. And that, as a county commission, that we would continue to permit and to permit mobile home parks where we know citizens are paying into, uh, product that unlike, uh, other stick-built houses, they do not hold value. And I think that from that angle, we have a two-tiered, um, concern in mobile, um, looking at the future of mobile homes in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Director Peters, thank you very much for the update. Really appreciate it, and we'll keep our fingers crossed for the upcoming hurricane season. Thank you. All right. Uh, Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the next, uh, presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Because we've got the add-on item, item number 28, um, I will just, uh, Mr. Chairman, do the update at that time associated with that item. That'll be the first item on general business. And of course, Claudia will hang around and, and be around for any questions you might have on that as well.
Okay, that sounds good. So we'll move on to consent. Uh, Vice Chair Proctor, you're recognized.
Mr. Chairman, um, the items which previously you called for, uh, number six is the one that I wanted to speak to.
Okay.
Who?
Is, is that a motion search or?
So move.
Is there a second on the item to remove, uh, number six from the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor of the motion as stated by Vice Chair Proctor, say aye. Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously, seven zero. Thank you, uh, Vice Chair Proctor. Um, Mr. County Administrator, are there any additional agenda items for, for consent?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have two items pulled for consent addition to the item you just took action on. Uh, so it'd be items number six, uh, 14 and 15.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there a motion to approve the remaining items, all of the items on consent except for six, 14, and 15? Motion has been made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Welch, all in favor of consent items as stated, as stated by saying aye? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously, um, um, seven zero. All right. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the first item pulled for consent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, item number six, uh, is pulled by Commissioner Proctor, is a proposed resolution authorizing the conveyance of property to the Department of Transportation for the use in Woodville Highway Widening Project. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on this item.
Okay. Vice Chair Proctor, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you. Um, Commissioners, I pulled this particular item, um, because I needed to oppose it. Uh, this project, which FDOT, uh, desires to do a, 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 a pairing of a one-way street. The community down there, uh, we've had petitions with over 400 signatures. Um, community members have gone to the, um, CRPT to voice concerns, and we literally are being run over. It is not the desire of a community to have a one-way coming north from Gale Avenue up to, um, Paul Russell Road. It is not the desire of a community to have a southbound one-way pair, uh, from Paul Russell going down to Ridge Road. And this item philosophically opposes, and we have not been heard, this commission has failed to support the district commission's request that this thing be thought through again. Uh, CRPTA is set with deaf ears, and it failed to hear the voices of people. And I want also say for the record that but for who the people are, who the citizens are in the south side of this county, this would not be muscled down the throat of other areas. We have dealt, uh, coming from the Killarn area, we have dealt coming from the new, uh, highway up there off of Centerville Road, and we have dealt with, uh, the issues which Commissioner, uh, Welch has brought to us to modify, uh, transportation approaches in the Northeast. This commission has heard, the city's commission has heard, and anybody who has heard. But when it comes to, uh, four-point area and what the FDOT desires to do, all of y'all is deaf and ain't paying attention. But when it comes to other areas of this community, all of you all stand up with wide-open ears, and I'm totally disappointed in all of y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Uh, Mr. County Administrator, do you have, uh, some comments that you wanted to provide?
No, sir. Just, um, here to answer any questions.
I had you in the speaker's queue. Um, okay. Um, Commissioners, is there a motion on, on this item number six? Motion's been made by Commissioner Dozier. Is there a second? Okay, seen no second. Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chair, um, with respect to Commissioner Proctor's heartfelt comments, and, um, those of us who serve on the CRTPA Board have been involved in this conversation for many years. I, I understand, um, the concerns, and we have heard a lot of dialogue, and we've heard from the citizens who issued this petition. On the other hand, this work, I believe it is funded by, um, FDOT. It involves Woodville Highway improvements beyond just that Gale Avenue intersection, and it is something that CRTPA has, um, been working on for many, many years. This was not a easy decision for sure. The one-ways were very, very challenging. I think, uh, Commissioner Maddox, um, if you remember those early conversations, I think all of us had some concerns, but went through all of the different studies, and this was, in the end, the best recommendation from DOT and the engineers, um, for solving some of the traffic issues there and coming in from Crawfordville and Woodville, bringing that traffic in and out of, um, Leon County. So I, I think this is a challenging one, and I respect the concerns that have been raised over the last few years. It is, the decision, though, is made by CRTPA in conjunction with FDOT and those presentations. So this item, the, the work is going to move forward, and this item, if I under, Mr. County Administrator, correct me if I need a little bit of help on this, but it is to facilitate that. It's some county property, and right away, it's a necessary step in that process. Any decision to change the project's scope or end the project would have had to be made at CRTPA. And we did go through that, we actually extended that discussion, if I remember correctly, many, many times to hear more input from the citizens. So I know it wasn't resolved in the way that many people liked, but I think we did do our due diligence at CRTPA. So I think this item should move forward, um, because it's just a small part of what the county is involved in, in this overall project. I hope I did that justice. I didn't get a second, and I know this is something that-
Commissioner Dozier, I'll second the motion.
Yeah, for those of you who are not on CRTPA, it might have kind of come out of the blue because you haven't been in those conversations. So I just wanted to, Mr. Chair, fill that out a little bit, that we have talked about this for many, many years and heard a lot from the citizens.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. It, yes, and I'll, I'll second the motion for the reasons you stated. I'm, I'm on the CRTPA, and, uh, we've had, uh, very lengthy discussions about this, and this is not an easy decision whatsoever. Um, you know, I've met with, with folks in that area, uh, met, you know, aside from the meetings, met with, uh, Greg Slay to talk about it as well. It's, it's been a really difficult issue. But this is, um, after a lot of study and going through the different alternatives, this is the best, the best option of a set of less-than-perfect options. So, um, I've got, uh, Vice Chair Proctor, and then Commissioner Maddox.
I'll, I'll yield-
On point, real quick, Commissioner Proctor. Um, Madam Attorney, I, I just want to make sure we're in the right order. If a motion is made by a member and it, and it doesn't get a second, that motion can't be made by, the same exact motion can't be made by the same member, can it? I just want to make sure we're in the right order.
Madam County Attorney.
Uh, I believe that's correct. Uh, in this case, though, procedurally, uh, the chair had not said that the motion died for lack of a second.
I think he did.
Uh, no, I didn't.
He did not say that it died for lack of a second.
Okay. Yeah, Commissioner Maddox, just, just for clarification, um, Commissioner Dozier made the motion, um, and then had requested to speak. Um, I let her speak. I was about to basically call the motion, uh, dead for a lack of second, but, um, as she was speaking, I was intending to second it, but I waited till she finished.
I'm not contesting it. I just want to make sure.
I'm, I'm not contesting it. I just want to make sure we were in the right, we were in the right order, uh, per our rules. So I'll just, I'm good. I just want to make sure as we move forward.
Totally understand, Commissioner Maddox. Thank you very much. Yep. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Proctor, Vice Chair Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Dozier said that the CRPTA and our chairman said that they've done everything that they can, and it was, um, uh, haggard over, and they, um, uh, they beat it and hurt it, and, and it was proper. Uh, there is nothing proper about running over the citizens' will to not be placed in a roundabout, uh, one-way that totally reroutes what has been there historically for years. These are not citizens who are asking for a overpass. They are simply asking to be let alone and allow the natural order of what exists, exist. This is not a superior transportation improvement. This is a frustrating, this is a burden placed upon citizens who, every single individual, there's not one citizen from the area who supports it. Now, do they have, uh, a consulting firm? Did they hire engineers? Do they have the pretty pictures and all the renderings that we see from other? No. Have they expressed as best they can civically, of which they attempt and have attempted? Yes. Have they been heard? No. And so the capitulation of the CRPTA has not stood up for the citizens of this community. And though they are comprised of Gaston County, Jefferson County, Walcolor County, and Leon County, the people who represent Leon County have not stood up and heard our people. I'm disappointed because the state of Florida should not call a shot that inflicts that kind of confusion, that makes more difficult the pathway, the ingress, the egress, of two roads that serve as emergency evacuation routes. So we hear from Mr. Peters about 20-some storms have names. But the state of Florida, what they want to do is make a one-way pairing on the two emergency roads coming out of the south side, the major arteries. This is insane. But the silence with which the CRPTA does not hear these people is strictly because of who they are and their socioeconomic status. And that's why the state of Florida can run over them and will because you won't stand up and have not stood up for them. I believe in what's suggested this body, that we have a resolution, a meeting, that the desires of the people who live there, and there's no way engineerily that this makes sense. In fact, the people presented a proposal, and this first started off as not coming out of the state, coming, what we first set off to do was to widen Woodville Highway from, um, Tram Road down to Capital Circle and a little piece further. This has been on the books that way, and somewhere it was aborted, and it was changed for some reason we don't understand. It started off simply. And I think that we should go back to the state commission and represent and call for the reestablishment, what we first asked, that we widen Woodville Highway, uh, as Monroe passes into Woodville, and that should be what we do. So I'll offer a substitute motion on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, notwithstanding the CRPTA, that the Leon County Board of County Commissioners, we request that the state go- go back and look at the widening of Woodville north and south without all of that confusion that they are imposing upon this part of the community. That is my motion.
Okay, Vice Chair Proctor's made the substitute motion. Is there a second? Okay, the substitute motion dies for lack of a second. Commissioner Maddox and then Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe Commissioner Dozier, myself, and you, Mr. Chair, were a part of about, what, three meetings, maybe four, that spoke specifically to this item? Um, I, I think it's a little bit disingenuous to say that the CRTPA Board didn't listen. Um, that, that item, that, that project was ready to go out the door and, and move to building that first meeting. And Commissioner Proctor, I believe myself, and, and you asked on that occasion for citizens to be heard and for their, um, their proposal to be evaluated. And that FDOT was sitting down personally with those citizens and talk about how they could come to common ground and discuss that proposal that they made in detail. Came back another meeting after that, still to, to no resolve for the citizens, and we asked again, that they go back again, have another conversation. What can we do to get closer to where everybody wants to be? And I believe it was the third meeting, at that third meeting, that after a long, long conversation about every single option that was put in place forward, including the people's option, I believe is what it was called, uh, the FDOT expressed that, um, those monies would not be expended, correct? If, because the people's option, uh, did not yield the result from the traffic study that would warrant, uh, spending the type of money that was going to have to be spent and the extra monies that were going to be spent. And so as we sit here today, I, I, I mean, it didn't go the way that those citizens wanted to go, and quite frankly, I liked for everybody to meet in the middle and it didn't necessarily go the way I wanted to go. Uh, but a decision was made, and we sit here today. And so I, I didn't want for us to sit here and not tell the story about exactly what happened. Now, we may not agree. It may not have been the, the result that those folks wanted, may not be the result that, that some of us wanted. But three meetings after a first meeting where a decision was supposed to be made because we appealed for more time and more conversation, uh, that was given, then the decision was made. And so, um, as, I, I just, I appreciate the fight that you have in, in, in this, Commissioner Proctor, and, and how you represent your district, and the fact that this is something that, that, that your constituents felt like was very important to them, and they didn't agree with. Uh, but I wanted to make sure that we understood everything that was done prior to this day for us to get to this point. And though we may be disappointed in, in the result that happened at the CRTPA, uh, that there was an opportunity that was for those folks to speak to, um, FDOT and the Board of the CRTPA. CRTPA. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. You've got Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chair, I'll make it quick because Commissioner Maddox just covered a lot of the territory that I was thinking about as well. Um, and I appreciate that. I don't want anyone to be left with the impression that we ignored these concerns. In fact, well before that happened, the Board itself expressed concerns about the various options and asked a lot of questions. But the one point that I wanted to emphasize is that this project, FDOT, looked at the full scope. It was widening Woodville all the way up through to, um, I believe, Tram or Paul Russell. Um, it is one package. And if, if CR, we were told if CRTPA Board did not move forward with the final proposal for this very, very large roundabout, if, um, as it's been called, we would lose funding for the entire project. We wouldn't get the improvements to the rest of Woodville Highway, which are necessary for evacuation routes, for many other issues. So it, it was a real struggle. And, um, I think, again, Commissioner Maddox articulated very well, going through all those meetings and even stopping, and I think, to give him credit, Commissioner Richardson, um, our city colleague, was very, um, a very strong advocate for that as well. I think the whole Board supported taking the time to really look at these issues and hear from the citizens. It was not a option that FDOT would move forward with, and we would have lost funding for the entire project. So again, um, very difficult, but I think we need to move forward with this item because it's, it's the right of way. It's going to happen, and they, they need to have the right of way and the easements in this area. The very last thing, the access that Commissioner Proctor brought up, I do remember a conversation at CRTPA, I myself encouraging the city to look at different access from the neighborhood because this was going to present challenges. These are city roads internal to the neighborhood. I hope they address some of those concerns. There are some improvements that could be made. That's not a county decision. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. I've got Vice Chair Proctor wrap it up, and then we'll vote.
Mr. Chairman, I think that Commissioner Maddox did an excellent job of capturing of the process, as well as CRTPA, um, their efforts to, uh, extend involvement of community. Uh, he failed to add that there were actually, uh, two, uh, town, town hall meetings, uh, there at that church, uh, by Ridge Road, and there was a town hall meeting, uh, there in Woodville to accompany. Uh, so I want to add to what you've also, however, notwithstanding that Commissioner Dozier captures very well, uh, exactly, however, notwithstanding all of what occurred when Commissioner Dozier, and I think I, I hope I'm quoting you right, we were told that if the CRTPA did not agree to this roundabout, we would lose funding for the entire Woodville widening. That's the problem, that the CRTPA was told. And what they represent is a titular, uh, figurehead because their voices, they were told, and it mattered not what the people said in the town hall meetings, uh, in Woodville, what the people said in the town hall meeting there at the church, uh, in Four Point. It really didn't matter because Commissioner Dozier's just captured it very well. We were told. And as long as you have, uh, tying the entire package of a project and not, uh, unlinking, but tying the whole thing as one package. But the people were very clear in town hall meetings. They don't want the money. They don't want it. They would rather the status quo to remain as it is. And that's whole than to receive some money that changes the whole trajectory of transportation in that area. I'm very clear, thank you very much, Commissioner, uh, Maddox reminding me of the, the role, um, but I'm also very clear, and are we, uh, stool pigeons unable to represent the voices of the people? They don't want the widening. They're saying, no, thank you. So we're not hurt, uh, Mr. Chairman, to not receive, in fact, we feel protected. We're in a better state not to do anything to the road, and we don't want it. So I want to make, uh, the motion to decline this money that changes, uh, this whole transportation corridor, and to respectfully, on behalf of the people and their voices, to say, I make the motion that we decline the FDOT's imposition of its money to change this highway.
Vice Chair Proctor, there's a, there's a motion on the floor that's been seconded right now. You could offer a substitute motion to that effect if you wish.
I meant it as a substitute motion, sir.
There's a substitute motion on the floor. Is there a second? Okay, Vice Chair Proctor's substitute motion, uh, dies for a lack of second. Let's go ahead and vote on the original motion made by Commissioner Dozier to accept the item, seconded by myself. All in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, then I, I think the motion passed five to two with both Commissioner Maddox and Vice Chair Proctor in dissent. Is that correct? All right. Commissioner Dozier, yes, do you have something about this item? Oh, oh, yes, Commissioner Cummings.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I just had a point of, of clarification, and my question is it relates to the widening of Woodville, Woodville Highway. Have the right-of-way maps been adopted for that project? Or is it still in the works? Has the, um, what CRTPA adopted the right-of-way, the right-of-way maps as far as the configuration? Has it been adopted? I mean, are we in a point, are we in a position now where that's already been done? And the, the resolutions that we have is county property that, that's essential for right-of-way purposes? That's my holistic question.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Uh, Commissioner Dozier, do you have a comment on that? Yes, Commissioner Dozier.
Can I, Mr. Chair, I thought you had to. I think, uh, our Director Slay from CRTPA, Director Slay from CRTPA could answer the question much better than I could. Um, but CRTPA doesn't manage the construction. We approve the projects, so I think this is one that is moving forward through, um, Board of Department of Transportation.
Right.
And I assume they are at the point where they are acquiring right-of-way, um, I, I believe they are, from private sector, but also from the county, which would have led to this agenda item. Is that correct, Mr. County Administrator? This is the formal request.
That's correct. We're at the point in the process where the resolution would need to be approved, uh, or not, relative to the, to the acquisition of the property needed to construct the roadway.
Okay.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman. So my question is that right-of-way maps have not been approved, then?
It, the, the question as to the, the specific question on the right-of-way maps, I just don't have an answer for yet. I have to call up Brent Pell, our, our Public Works Director, who is available and online and, and following the discussion.
Point of information, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Brent, did you hear it? Did you hear the question about, uh, the right-of-way maps? Whether the right-of-way maps have been, whether the, the action has been taken to, uh, to, on the reservation of right-of-way maps on the project?
Yes, the right-of-way maps have been developed and approved by DOT.
Thank you. Mr. Pell, Vice Chair Proctor, you have a point of information?
Yes. Uh, County Attorney, uh, I'm a little bit confused, and could you help clarify? Uh, the CRTA largely was told, dictated what would occur. It didn't matter what the people said. We, they were told, and as Commissioner Dozier pointed out, they felt that they had to just accept this money. At this stage, what stops this particular train, uh, from leaving the station? And does the governor, can't the governor unilaterally, does the FDOT Secretary? What options do the people of the South Side have, uh, against this imposition, against their will and understanding of safe, uh, and fluid traffic flow in this area? What steps do we have to stop this?
Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The steps and the authority that the Board has today is whether or not to approve the adoption of the resolutions, which would provide for the conveyance of the land necessary for the project to move forward. That's, that's where we are.
Okay, let me ask a different question.
Vice Chair Proctor, please, please wrap up the conversation, please.
Is the governor of the state of Florida in charge of the FDOT? Is it not an agency under the governor's office?
I believe FDOT is a cabinet agency, um, because I believe that the agency head is approved by the cabinet as a whole. I believe that's accurate, but I'm not a hundred percent on that, but I think that's a cabinet agency.
I disagree. The secretary is appointed by the governor, not elected by the citizens of Florida. Okay, I understand. I understand where we are. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Uh, Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the next item pulled from consent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number fourteen has been pulled from consent by the chairman.
Thank you, uh, Mr. County Administrator. Um, my wife is an independent real estate contractor with Hamilton Realty Advisors. Um, she does not have contracts in the Summerfield Development, but some of those other agents in the brokerage do. Um, though she would not receive compensation from those sales from the other agents, I would like to recuse myself based on the appearance of a conflict pursuant to Section 286.012 Florida statutes. So I'm going to recuse myself from this agenda item. Would- Okay, a motion's been made to accept the item by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. All in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously six to zero. All right, Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the next and last item pulled from consent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Final item pulled from consent is item fifteen. It's a license agreement with Babe Ruth League for the use of county, uh, full-size baseball fields was pulled by Commissioner Dozier.
Commissioner Dozier, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I have no issues with the contract itself. Um, very much appreciate our longstanding relationship with Babe Ruth, Little League, and Pop Warner. Um, we offer a lot of great, um, sports, uh, opportunities, um, at our, uh, county facilities. However, it did strike me, reading this item, and something I've thought about, um, particularly in the last couple of years, the county has no offering for girls' sports at all, and there may not be the demand. I played softball, T-ball with the city league when I was a kid. I lived in the county, so maybe we draw a lot of kids into the city league, um, certainly for T-ball and others. But I discussed this with County Administrator during briefing, and, um, I think it might be just a good opportunity, particularly with our brand-new Parks and Rec Director, uh, Amanda Heidecker, to just assess the situation, look and see what opportunities we have for our girls, and whether or not there is a demand for any other sports offerings at our county facilities. Um, I don't know what that answer is going to be, Mr. Chair, but, um, I, Mr. County Administrator, I'll hand this over to you if you have any comments, or, um, if you would like to put our brand-new Parks and Rec Director on the spot for any comments, as we discussed, and welcome her to our, our, a different position on our team, I should say.
Mr. County Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Dozier, no, that's all we need, and I know that, uh, Amanda Heidecker in this role will be very excited to, to take a look into that and, uh, and report back to the Board as appropriate.
Fantastic. Um, thank you, and I am excited for Amanda to take a look at this as well. So my motion, Mr. Chair, is to approve item fifteen and ask, um, that we just look at any offerings for girls' sports, if the demand exists, and to, um, bring us back any opportunities if necessary. Thank you.
Okay. The motion's been seconded by multiple people. Uh, first on, in, was Commissioner Welch, um, and then Vice Chair Proctor. I have you in the speaker's queue, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I one hundred percent, no, I one hundred and twelve percent support the motion, and I'm caught off guard, and I'm, I'm a little ashamed to say, that I was unaware that we did not have an equalization, um, of sports, a Title IX-ness, if you will, abiding in our county. And I, I am suggesting that we're not just looking to review the situation, but I'm hopeful that in 2021, we're looking to correct and to make available, and how do young girls, um, apply for that which is, no options exist. And we have to make those options available. And, um, Vince, I always want to say that, let's get this done. We need girls' sports, uh, like we have boys' sports, and let's just catch up with what time it is.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I might, I just don't want to leave anybody with the wrong impression. This was about not having exclusively girls' sports. So, so many of our leagues are open to girls and boys, if not all of them. So, again, I just wanted to make it sure that we were being clear that, that we, our, our current active sports offerings, uh, in many cases, are available to girls and boys. It's just that what Commissioner Dozier and I spoke about was leagues that were specific to girls.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, on point here? I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm just, whatever she, I heard her say, uh, and I can't re-say it, but I'm with her on that right now.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Commissioner Dozier-
Mr. Chair, just on point here. I'm, the county, unlike the city, we don't run our own sports leagues. We contract with three great groups, Little League, Pop Warner, and Babe Ruth, to offer sports. And, Mr. County Administrator, I, I appreciate the caveat. If they are open for some girls to participate, that is a good thing to note as well, but they are predom- they are predominantly boys' teams. And I don't know if there is a demand for parents who want to take their girls to a softball team at a Chairs versus a city team. It's just assessing that demand and looking at those opportunities, but I did not want to put it on the spot like we haven't been supportive of this, and I appreciate the County Administrator's comments there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, I will be repetitive. Previously, there was a fairly competitive girls' sports in not only the Fort Braden, Little League community, but also at Woodville, as well as Chairs. Through the years, there's been a real, and many of you that are experienced with this, there's been a real emphasis on players moving into travel genes, and that has kind of watered down our girls' programs. But like our Administrator said, we actively have co-ed participation all the way up through eight-years-old, for example, at District 20 at Fort Braden. But I couldn't agree with you more, Kristen Dozier, or, excuse me, Commissioner Dozier. I would, I would certainly, I would certainly love to see it make a rebound and a renaissance. That would be great.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. I think this is a great motion. Commissioner Dozier, thank you very much for bringing it up. I'm going to support it enthusiastically. I think everyone will. So the motion was made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Bryan Quik on the draw, Welch. All is in favor of the motion, as stated? Say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And that concludes our items pulled from consent. Next on the order of business is citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. Mr. County Administrator, who is our, are there any members of the public who would like to speak on non-agenda items?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three in-person speakers, citizens for non-agenda items. The first is Ben Castro.
Mr. Castro, thank you very much for coming, sir. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Ben Castro, our farm is at 10-454 Rose Road. I'm going to lay a, a survey out here on this. What I've got to say is, is if you're a landowner, a farmer, that's, that's fine. Take, take a look at it, and we'll be referring to that. If you want to give some land that you own to your children, and you have to go down to planning and zoning, and it's totally ludicrous, ridiculous, I'm trying to think of the right adjective, they just put you through hell to, to do that. If you pass away, my, my parents passed away, Daddy passed away in 2001, about 20 years ago. Mama passed away in, in seven years ago, and there's four of us. And the hoops and the ridiculous stuff that we had to go through, and I went up a, a number of times, but I, I want to stop here, though, as I, I want to say, I, I appreciate, I don't know the full situation, what Bill Proctor was on the, the road on Paul Russell and Tram Road. That's out our way. And I graduated high school from Rickards High School in 1968, and I don't know, I hadn't looked at the situation, but I respect Mr. Bill for, he knows who he's representing. The taxpayers of this county that pay, built this courthouse, I don't know if all of you understand that, but, but he obviously does. Also, he's tuned in on something else. I do fully realize planning commissions and planning and zoning departments are highly important, but they get out of hand, and you people are the Supreme Court over it. Bill knows this. I don't know how many, and when they come up with ridiculous stuff, it's your job to correct this. I'm going to go back into this situation. By the way, on this farm here, the, which one has the survey, the south of, bordering it is Ms. Jason Osteen, and Ms. Chastity Osteen's property borders our farm. It's a 248-acre farm. Daddy bought the 160 acres in 1960, and then added on to it four more times, which that brings up something. Now, we, I, I go down to a number of times, planning and zoning, the main one I've been working with, and he's, to me, he's most kind, he's helped, is Weldon Richardson. And so we're following the directions. He even told me, well, you, you write, the current way it was on was three parcel numbers, and there's four of us. I have two brothers, a sister, there's four of us, and said, well, you cannot divide it up unless you go into, I don't know, $10,000 extra dollars or something. Oh, they got 700, almost $800 to wait for a family division. But you got to have the existing parcels. There got to be four parcels. Well, Weldon told me about three years ago, go down to the property praiser's office, give them the description, which is a legal description, and they'll make the parcel number. So a few weeks ago, and I'm, and I presented Weldon, I said, there's only one track can touch Rose Road because of this, and we're dividing it up basically in 60-acre tracks. The county property praiser shows it 243 acres, but it surveyed out 248. The back tracks, well, one of the, the eastern side is, touches the St. Mark's Equestrian Preserve. The most northern...
Mr. Castro, I'm, I'm sorry, sir, but the, the three minutes, the time limit, time limit has been reached. One thing I could do, and if the, if the Board here would, would support it, is we'd like to get a status update on, on how, how staff works with you on this. So one thing, if you could have a motion to that effect on, on the situation. I read your email, sir, and I, I'm, I'm sure the other members of the Board have read your email. I had not seen the map there, but if, if there would be a motion to have an update from staff, Commissioner Cummings, is that it?
I still move.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
And is that a second, Commissioner Dozier?
Mr. Chair, I will second that. Brief comment.
Yes, brief comment, please.
We have been in communication with other family members and talked with staff at Deesum twice today to try to understand some of the issues, so I think that update would be very helpful. I wondered if we would need it from staff verbally, but because of the length of the meeting, I think that would help flesh out some of these issues and some of the questions I had after receiving your, your email, Mr. Castro. So I think that will help us address these. Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier.
I fully followed Weldon Richardson's suggestions now. He said we needed, you said, eight surveys, and anyway, I'm going, I understand your time limit is valuable.
I appreciate you coming here, and I appreciate you waiting so long to speak. We've got a long meeting, a long agenda, though. We'll get in this, we'll get a staff report sent to the Board, and we'll go from there, sir. Thank you very much. Really appreciate your time. Thank you. All right, the next speaker, please.
The next speaker, the next speaker is Stanley Sims.
Mr. Sims, thank you for being here. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, Stanley Sims. I'm a business owner at 603 Martin Luther King Boulevard. And I guess what? Commissioner Proctor was trying to say about people who live in communities of color, who feel disenfranchised and feel like their voice cannot be heard, and they've got someone that literally sits in their community but does not listen to them from their community. And it's not isolated. The words of Dr. Martin Luther King says, "I'm dissatisfied." He says, "I'm tired. I'm tired of begging for things that are rightfully mine." Down in Frenchtown, I have narrow sidewalks with big utility poles that sit directly in between the sidewalk, that requires our children to step down into a busy street on Old Bainbridge Road. Yeah, I'm tired. I'm tired, and, and, and I'm dissatisfied. I'm so tired, and I'm so dissatisfied, that even though we were told that if we develop Gaines Street, that Frenchtown would not look like it looks. But what did we do? We took, we took that money and put tops on motels. And I guess Commissioner Dozier, it's right on paper. It might be fiscal sound to not throw away that amount of money in order to get a road, more section of a road repaired than the small section of a road where people have lived for years. Yeah, we dissatisfied. But here's what hurts me to Commissioner Maddox. Where do we get our satisfaction? Because I heard on this dais, I don't like it, but that's just the way it is. But guess what? It's not like that over in Wilani. When they get dissatisfied, things happen. When septic tanks fail in Kalaan, not because of me, but because of lousy development, we took the bullet and paid for them. Because they were dissatisfied. Things change.
Mr. Sims, thank you very much.
Depends on who gets dissatisfied.
Thank you very much, sir. Your time expired. Uh, Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the next, the next public speaker?
Of being dissatisfied.
Next speaker is Whitfield Leland.
He actually is, but he's dissatisfied.
That concludes your speakers, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Okay, we're moving on to general business. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the first item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you know, last week, the Governor issued two executive orders, which immediately suspended any COVID-19 emergency orders on individuals and businesses issued by local governments. This is an issue, Commissioners, I know you, you've all been keeping up to speed with, with respect to the, to the updates provided by myself and by our County Attorney. The item before you tonight, we'll, we'll get into some of the implications and, and recommendations that we have for you that are directly associated with this. Commissioners, the, the Governor's actions included the suspension of, of any emergency actions taken by local governments relative to face covering requirements, business occupancy restrictions, signage requirements, and any, any other action that imposes a restriction or a mandate on businesses or individuals due to COVID-19. In effect, the executive orders preclude any county from requiring individuals or businesses to take any mitigative actions to slow the spread of COVID-19 or reduce the risk of resurgence. With respect to county operations, the county may no longer require citizens to wear face coverings or practice physical distancing at county facilities or events. As a result, Commissioners, the agenda before you seeks consideration to implement Phase Three of the Leon County COVID-19 Response Reopening Plan, and because of the Governor's executive orders, or because the Governor's executive orders also invalidated the county's face covering ordinance, we're also recommending that the Board schedule a public hearing for June 8th to consider the repeal of this ordinance. Commissioners, as we've noted in the item, the vast majority of county services and facilities were already fully open to the public before the executive orders were issued last week. Under the current reopening phase, our libraries are operating at reduced capacity, and we have suspended reservations at community centers and pavilions. But for the most part, again, our operations are, are fully open to the public. Also, based on previous Board direction, last September, organized sports and activities at our county facilities have resumed, but are limited to county licensed sport, sports leagues with COVID-19 mitigation plans in place. Under full Phase Three, Commissioners, all county services and facilities would return to normal operations and capacity. The agenda item before you includes a detailed discussion of services under Phase Three. As a high-level summary, although the county can no longer require citizens to wear face coverings and practice social distancing based on the executive orders, we would continue to encourage citizens to do so, consistent with the latest CDC guidance. However, as an employer, we can and will continue to require county employees to wear face coverings, practice social distancing, and conduct daily temperature checks. These internal protocols will continue to evolve, of course, based on CDC guidance. Also, as you'll see in the agenda item, Commissioners, commission meetings would return to in-person participation with full capacity in the chambers. However, we would continue to make accommodations for citizens who wish to participate remotely or, or to provide written comments. And, and those accommodations also would remain in place until the CDC no longer recommends any indoor mitigation measures, Commissioners. Also, our Health Department Director, Claudia Blackburn, has joined us each meeting, Commissioners, since February of last year to provide a COVID-19 public health update, and we have been providing daily updates to you since February 27th, as Commissioner Dozier noted earlier, not only on our public health metrics, but also on our various Leon County Cares programs and partnerships. And again, yesterday's update was number 300. But Commissioners, as vaccine, as vaccine efforts continue, and as the number of COVID cases, new cases continues to decline, what I'd recommend to the Board to do going forward is to bring Claudia back, in addition to everything else that you have in the item, to bring Claudia back for public health updates at commission meetings as needed, and you know we won't hesitate to bring her back. And should the Board approve the full Phase Three transition, I would continue to provide COVID-19 reports instead of every day, and some of you may say, "Thanks," for this one, but instead of every day, but on each Friday, which would include the public health metrics as well as recap of our progress in implementing our, our Leon Cares, our ERA, and all future ARP plans. This, of course, in no way should belie all of the work that we have and are continuing to do. It just represents, hopefully, a, a little bit of a transition. Mr. Chairman, with that, I'll, I'll hand it back to you. This concludes the presentation on the agenda item. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. As I mentioned, Claudia is also here, and, and I need to give Chastity Osteen and the County Attorney's Office special thanks in recent days, as they've been instrumental in providing an awful lot of legal guidance in response to these developments. And Chastity, of course, is also available to answer any questions that you might have on this. With, we welcome any additional Board direction, of course, and with that, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we're recommending Options One and Two.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
We have no speakers on this item.
All right, thank you. In the speaker's queue, I've got Commissioner Welch. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to thank the County Attorney for keeping us up to date, again, last week on, on the Governor's actions, and to the County Administrator and the staff for kind of ongoing information provision to us as, as Commissioners, and I'd like to move Options One and Two.
Motion's been made for Options One and Two. Staff recommendation by Commissioner Welch, seconded by Commissioner Cummings. I've got Commissioner Dozier, then Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too want to thank, Mr. County Administrator, you and the County Attorney for your hard work. There was a lot of analysis, I know that had to happen after the executive orders, as happens every time, so really appreciate your guidance over the last week, plus throughout the last year, but that we say all the time. Just picking up on the beginning of, or what you said about the upcoming schedule, I think the Friday updates are fine. I mean, we have ongoing information all the time. The social media team is phenomenal and pushing out the vaccine maps, everything else. Truly appreciate that. Mr. County Administrator, though, with respect, just thinking about our commission meeting schedule, because we have the commission meetings on the second Tuesday of the month, four weeks in between, and our positivity rate has continued to go up, looking at yesterday's report, it's, I mean, and this week, it's 6.55. It's been increasing every week for a while now. I'm reluctant to say that we don't need a conversation in June. We might not, but I'm not sure what that trigger is. So... Um, so, uh, you could fill that out for me a little bit more, but with the positivity rate over 5%, it seems like a check-in, and particularly about the vaccines, about the vaccine hesitancy and that, you know, the work that we have on that end, um, and because we will be talking about the stimulus funds, it may be good to at least have one more conversation in June. So, that's just one member's opinion, but I wanted to put that out there. We could have that for a discussion, Mr. Chair. The second thing that I was going to mention is, um, something that I think is really, it's been important for me in my conversations with folks, that, um, I think Commissioner Maddox, it was your motion on, at the April 13th meeting, we were going to look at our phased reopening plan regardless of the executive order. So tying the mask issue with the phased reopening, I really, I've been careful to separate those two things. The masking, I, I really appreciate and agree that we need to continue to recommend masks because that's what the CDC is recommending. That's the guidance we've followed throughout the last year. So I'm glad we're gonna do that. The phased reopening, as we talked about in April, I think we are at a time when our community centers could reopen. Thinking about the heat and our seniors and others, maybe use Chair's Community Center or Woodville or Fort Braden or any of the others, I would like to see them reopen. And planning for concerts in September, I'm gonna be optimistic and say, I hope we can meet that. We need lead time to plan for that. So, again, I just think it was important to separate those two, and from my gut feeling, I would have been in the same place on the reopening regardless of the mask issue. Um, and we've been very deliberate throughout the last year. So, that's it, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. I've got Commissioner Jackson and then Commissioner Maddox.
Uh, thank you, um, Madam Attorney, for keeping us all, just like, uh, Commissioner Welch's comments, keeping us all updated and taking a really, um, large elephant and putting it into chunks that we could understand, uh, very quickly, uh, based on the, um, the, uh, I guess, the phased reopening and, and, um, the mask ban, so to speak. Uh, we appreciate you educating us as quickly as possible. And thank you, Mr. Administrator and county staff, for continuing to, uh, kind of, um, uh, hold the candle by asking that the employees continue to wear a mask. We're at, I think, uh, 90,000 over the weekend as far as vaccination rate. That means at any given time in Leon County, there's, if three or more are gathered, that, um, only one of you is vaccinated. So, uh, I look forward to a day when we can all not wear these things, especially schoolchildren in schools, um, elderly that have difficult reading with them. I think we all have grown a little weary of the masking, and if we can just hang in there a little longer, uh, it'll be great. But I, the county leads the way in, in example, um, for this, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Uh, Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, appreciate the motion, Commissioner Welch. Uh, Commissioner Dozier said we were gonna have the conversation about Phase Three. Uh, so I'm, I guess we're, we're right here where we need to be. Uh, the only thing I was gonna say is that, though we are at a point now where we no longer have the mandate and we're recommending, there's just about as much as we can do, I think it's important that, that we continue to push out their vaccinations. I, I, I've, um, got my second shot and fully vaccinated now. But the faster we get to that, that place of critical mass, where you got that herd immunity, the better off we're gonna be as a community. And if, if you're out there and, and it's a personal preference for you not to, that's, that's, that's your decision, but those who are on the edge, those who are just thinking about it, don't know, kind of considering, um, I believe that a good many of your county commissioners and community leaders have taken the vaccination, I would ask that you consider doing so yourself, so we meet that, that level of herd immunity, which would be big for our community. I don't think, I don't know if anybody up here has the numbers, but I think it's, what, more than 50%, I believe, but I don't know how close we are. Any, any idea of where we are percentage-wise as far as our population is concerned?
Matt, you, you may have that number right off the top of your head. It escapes me at the moment.
We're at about mid-30% for vaccination rate of our community.
Right. So as a community, I ask that we push, we push to move closer towards that, that herd immunity mask vaccination, more than 50%. Uh, last thing I'll say, and I'll hand it back over, Mr. Chair, is that I, I was reading today where I think Pfizer's been approved for 12 to 15. Don't hesitate to get your children vaccinated if you feel, if you feel comfortable doing so. But it's important now more than ever that we've moved in the direction of not mandating, uh, simply recommending, that, uh, we push those vaccinations out as far, as, as fast as we can, and those who, um, who are willing to wear masks, continue to do so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Cummings?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too want to thank the county administrator and Ms. Blackburn in her absence, uh, for all the work that they have done, keeping us up to date on, on the numbers and the recommendation, moving into Phase Three after the governor's, um, executive order. Uh, I had anticipated that, uh, Ms. Blackburn would be here, Mr. Chairman, because I understand some, uh, states and counties have adopted a procedure whereby they provide a digital proof of vaccinations, uh, to, to their citizens. And I think as we move to trying to just fully open up the, the economy, of course, we have to be concerned about who's vaccinated and who isn't. Uh, but I believe we might be moving toward a situation where even airlines, in, in order to perhaps, uh, buy tickets to sports events on the, um, NFL level and maybe even on the, on the local levels, levels, we might need proof that we have received our, our vaccinations. So, uh, I, I just wanted to explore that with her, if there's been any consideration about providing citizens, uh, having a platform available for citizens to be able to show, from a digital standpoint, you know, we all have, have our iPhones and what have you, uh, where we could download the app and be able to show that we have been fully, fully vaccinated. So I will, I guess, say that perhaps, uh, and I'm not sure the, the county administrator might have, have, uh, looked into that and might be in the process of looking into it, uh, as well. But, uh, just thank you all for all the hard work and trying to keep all of us safe, because it's very encouraging at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Um, just real quickly, uh, you know, I, I agree with Commissioner Dozier's comment about how we might, we might want to have another update on June 8th for our board committee, uh, commission meeting then, uh, particularly if the positivity rate remains above 5% a month from now. Um, but I, I, I have faith in the county administrator making that decision. Um, and then I think, Commissioner Dozier, are you in the speakers queue?
Mr. Chair, I was just on point for Commissioner Cummings' question, um, if you don't mind. I think that is a very good question, Commissioner, and, um, in our conversation, my briefing with the county attorney and county administrator, I should say, um, I believe we're gonna get kind of a legislative update and, and understanding of the implications of kind of the next phase of this, the bill the governor signed and what we are preemptive from doing going forward in regard to public health. He also signed the legislation, I believe, about the vaccine passport. So I was just gonna piggyback on what you said, and perhaps we could have that conversation in the legislative update. I believe you said that would be in June?
Yes.
And that would give us a better understanding of whether or not we could do something like that locally despite the governor's, um, or the bill that he signed recently. Does that, that gets to what you were saying? Is that correct, ma'am? Okay. That was it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Cummings, thank you also. Um, all's in favor of the motion as stated, made by Commissioner Welch, seconded by Commissioner Cummings for options one and two? All in favor, say aye? Aye? All opposed? Motion passes unanimously 6-0 with Commissioner, with Vice Chair Proctor out of chambers. Uh, next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. This item provides, uh, an overview of the current public engagement and approval process to cite homeless shelters, uh, and, um, provides recommendations, uh, to the process for board consideration. This, Commissioners, as we note throughout the item, was a strategic initiative of the board, uh, approved at your annual retreat. Uh, in all, Commissioners, while we have a, a very thorough, uh, process currently in place for the citing of homeless shelters in the county, from a land development process and a public notice standpoint, uh, this review did provide us with a good opportunity to enhance coordination with the Big Ben COC, uh, in the earliest phases of citing such facilities, uh, in the future, which we believe could be very beneficial. Uh, we note here that at your direction, we do have a joint workshop with the city on homelessness scheduled for July, and we have, uh, no speakers on this item and are happy to answer any question. We recommend options one and two.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. I've got, uh, got Commissioner Maddox and then Commissioner Dozier.
Move options one and two.
All right, motion's been made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. Um, Commissioner Dozier, do you still want to have some comments?
Extremely brief, Mr. Chair. This is exactly what I think we hoped for at our retreat discussion in January. Thank you for that, with the one caveat that I really, really hope that we can work with the city, um, in tandem and have one unified policy. I understand that, um, timing's not exactly right, but I, I hope, Mr. County Administrator, this will be up for discussion at that June workshop that we just approved. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Um, all's in favor of the motion, option one and two? May, a motion made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Dozier, say aye? Aye? All opposed? Motion passes unanimously 6-0 with Vice Chair Proctor out of chambers. Next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. Uh, this next item, item number 23, uh, proposes revisions to policies regarding the consent agenda. Commissioners, as you know, we're continuously looking at opportunities to increase efficiency and promote transparency in, in big ways and in small ways. This may be a relatively small way as it pertains to the organization of the board's agenda, but we, uh, believe that, consistent with how most other counties do this, that creating a category on consent, uh, where the board and the public can go to see all of your procurement items and on a particular agenda, uh, will improve not only transparency and efficiency, but also the user-friendliness of the agenda. Uh, of course, um, like any consent item, Commissioners, if you approve this, uh, the commissioner, any commissioner can, can pull any such item for further discussion or action. And, um, as we say here, um, uh, again, uh, this is how most counties are doing it. We're recommending option one. We're happy to answer any questions you might have, and we have no speakers on this item.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Got Commissioner Maddox and then Commissioner Jackson in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Administrator, speaking of consent, this is good enough that it should have been on consent, but, um, I'll make a motion for option number one and thank the county administrator and staff for keeping up with the times and best practices, uh, with what we do.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Jackson?
Yeah, I was, I'm gonna make the motion, so you, I guess I'll second Commissioner Maddox's motion.
All right, sounds good. All right, um, any other speakers? Seeing none, the motion made for option number one, made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All's in favor of the motion, say aye? Aye? All opposed? Motion, motion passes unanimously 6-0 with Vice Chair Proctor out of chambers. Mr. County Administrator, please introduce the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. As requested at your April 13th, uh, meeting, this item seeks board consideration to establish , uh, Election Day as a paid, uh, holiday for county government employees. Election Day is observed, uh, on the first Tuesday, after the first Monday in November, on even-numbered years. Uh, we have an analysis before you, we're seeking board's, uh, direction on this issue. We have no speakers on this item, and again, we are recommending option three, which is, uh, simply board direction.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. I've got to Commissioner Maddox, then Commissioner Cummings and Commissioner Welch. Commissioner, Commissioner Maddox?
Mr. Chair, I would, with honor, second Commissioner Cummings' motion for this item.
Commissioner Cummings, would you like to make a motion, ma'am?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, before I, I move to accept option one, I want to thank staff.
All right.
For, for the analysis, the fiscal impact, which is very minimal, and I think it would say a lot to our employees if we, if we, if we adopt our option one, so I, I still move.
Okay, and I, I, very proactively seconded by Commissioner Maddox, so we've got that on, on, already. Um, Commissioner Welch, do you have any comments, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just wanted to, uh, say, Commissioner Cummings, I appreciate your item. I appreciate you bringing it back. I think it's the right thing to do. Um, I, I wish that in our country, Election Day was a holiday, not to the, and I don't think it's, uh, I despise the political nature of this conversation because I feel like we do have a lot of days to vote, but Election Day should be like a celebration in this country, right? We, we sort of hold those values very close to us, the freedom to vote. It should be a holiday in a celebratory sense. And so I do support, um, your motion, Commissioner Cummings. My only concern is the fiscal impact. And in looking at the analysis of the item, we provide three flex holidays, is my understanding, to county employees. I would, I don't know how to approach this, whether I make a substitute motion or, or offer a friendly amendment to the motion to sort of substitute one of those flex holidays for Election Day, so that there is a net neutral fiscal impact. By, by doing that, we'd essentially be having no fiscal impact. Um, so instead of county employees having three flex holidays, they'd have two flex holidays, and one would be come Election Day. Uh, is that a, um, if that was a, I'd like to make a motion for that as a friendly amendment, uh, to this, to, to a substitute motion.
Okay, well, as, as friendly amendment? Because you can, you can offer that to Commissioner Cummings?
I don't know what the right, uh, process would be, whether I make a substitute motion or a friendly amendment to, uh, Commissioner Cummings, whatever her, her desire is.
Well, if you could, if it were me, I'd start off with a friendly amendment and, and ask Commissioner Cummings if he would accept that as a friendly amendment.
I don't accept it as a friendly amendment.
Okay. You could, Commissioner Welch, if you wish, to have a substitute motion and see if you had the votes to, um, to override.
I would like to make a substitute motion then, and, and see if, see how everybody feels about it.
Okay. So Commissioner Welch has had a substitute motion to, um, to basically make that Election Day as a, one of those three swing days. Um, is there a second for that motion? Okay, Commissioner Welch, the, the substitute motion dies for lack of seconds, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, let's see. Commissioner Dozier, I think I have you next in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I rang him, or I pressed the button just, um, with the substitute motion. I wasn't sure where, what way that was gonna go. Um, I absolutely respect the fiscal concerns there. The, the cost impact was actually less than I had anticipated when we talked about this last time. Um, I think this is something that, as you said, Commissioner Cummings, should be a national issue, a state issue, not necessarily a local issue, but we don't see the movement. We, we see it happening more on state and local levels. I was also impressed with how many states have a statewide holiday. I did not know there were that many. So I think this is the proper posture, um, but I don't want to eliminate one of the flex days, um, that our staff may have gotten, um, that, that's one of the benefits, and it is important to them because of this choice for Election Day, which would only happen every two years. So, um, I'm comfortable with it. I just wanted to respect the fiscal concerns. I, I think it's always good to ask those questions, um, but I think we're in the right posture. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Uh, Commissioner Cummings, did you have any, uh, part, uh, final remarks on the motion?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cummings. So, the motion made for option one, um, by Commissioner Cummings, seconded by Commissioner Maddox, is up for vote. All's in favor of the motion, say aye? Aye? Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously 7-0. All right, uh, Mr. County Administrator, uh, we have finished with general business. Let's go ahead and move on to citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. Uh, do we have any citizens who wish to speak, sir?
We do not.
Okay. Uh, seeing that there are no public, uh, speakers, or members of public who wish to speak, uh, we'll move on to discussion items from the county attorney. Madam County Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a couple of weeks ago, uh, I provided a memo to the board, um, letting you know that I would be requesting approval of a settlement agreement of the cases Leon County versus Williams, Williams and Pearl of the Wild. Uh, the background, very briefly, in that case, uh, is, uh, the county became aware of, um, property that was being used, not in compliance with the zoning requirements. There were multiple building code violations as well. Uh, the county brought suit, uh, to enjoin the use of the property, um, for the, for the purposes of holding events, uh, at the property. Uh, it's been in litigation for a little while. Uh, we did participate in mediation on this one, and under the terms of the settlement agreement, what's most important to the county is that the property owner would agree, uh, absent a court order or approval of the county, uh, not to hold events of the nature that were being held before, um, under the proposed settlement agreement, uh, to solve the case, to resolve the case. Uh, so we are recommending approval of the settlement agreement, uh, for your consideration today.
Thank you, Madam County Attorney. So, Madam County- So, Madam County Attorney, you are, you are seeking a motion, correct?
I'm so sorry, Mr. Chairman, what?
Are you seeking a motion to approve that?
I am seeking a motion to approve the settlement agreement. That's right.
I think Commissioner Dozier has made the motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm going to make the motion, and with compliments to our county attorney and her staff, once again, we are kicking the, these cases off and getting them settled, and this is, this is the right posture for us, so thank you very much.
Okay, and so I see Commissioner Welsh has seconded that, that motion. Any, any further discussion? All's in favor of the motion to approve the settlement as stated by the Madam, by Madam County Attorney, made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Welch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven zero. Any other items, Madam County Attorney?
Happy belated Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. Also, just want to give a shout out to all the county attorney, attorneys and staff. They really work really hard, and just want to give them a shout out for all of their efforts and hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam County Attorney. Mr. County Administrator, do you have any items for discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Just a quick one, obviously an issue that, that I'm sure all the commissioners are paying a lot of attention to right now. I figured I would just make a quick mention on the Colonial Pipeline hack and subsequent shutdown. Just to assure the board, we don't anticipate any operational issues related to the county. We're in good shape organizationally. From a community standpoint, again, we may see some issues and inconveniences. Well, again, nationally, the expectation is that it resolves itself within a few days. We may see some issues out in the community relative to garbage collection and some things like that. We expect those to be minimal. We're working with our providers now to ensure that there's no interruption of garbage service. At the, at the most, I think we, we may miss a, a yard day or a bulky day, but that's about it. We've been in touch with our local emergency providers in addition to ourselves with EMS to reach out, to ensure that the hospitals have ample supply of fuel for the limited transport units that they have in circulation and that sort of thing. Again, just figured I'd make a quick mention, since it's something that's I'm sure on, on most mind, given the nature of the events, and just wanted to, to make that note to you. Other than that, Commissioners, I have nothing. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Moving on to discussion items by Commissioners, Vice Chair Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would, thank you. I want to ask county attorney with respect to the fuel, is there a pecking order with respect to hypothetical, if the fuel was just cut off? I know that the county leadership team would be able to access gas from the supplies of the county. Are there others that would fall in line for gas as essential personnel with the county?
Mr. County Administrator?
We are, as it, as it goes right now, again, we're ensuring that from an operational standpoint, that we are all set. We don't anticipate any problems. We think from a, from just an employee standpoint, that sort of thing, certainly all of our personnel that are, that are, that are using vehicles to respond on work-related issues, we don't expect that they're, they're going to have any issues relative to fuel. But beyond that, we think the normal commuting and that sorts, those sorts of things will, will be resolved on their own over the next couple of days.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Commissioners.
Did you just?
Yep, I was not finished.
Commissioner Maddox?
No, I was not finished.
Oh, you weren't? Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Commissioners, I wanted to bring to our awareness that our neighboring county, Waukulla, county now has a road expansion of Crawfordville Road 319. It seems, appears to come right to our county line. Some years ago, we were able to widen Crawfordville 319 down to 363, the Waukulla Springs turnoff. We aborted. We had the opportunity and some $28 million. But the then Metropolitan Planning Organization diverted $14 million to widen Thomasville Road to make sure that it was three-lane all the way up to, or two-lane or whatever it was, up to Georgia Line. And we opted to widen 319 to Georgia Line, and we chose not to widen 319 to the Florida County of Waukulla. I would like for, to ask this board, given the new monies that our president has been talking about for road and infrastructure projects, that we would take this opportunity to look at the continuation, and our commitment at that time was that, at a better date, as well as demand, that we would look at widening Crawfordville Road to Waukulla County. Given the tractors, the dirt, the building, the construction already in place, I think now, Commissioners, is a wonderful time to seek from Congressman Lawson, his leadership in finding infrastructure dollars, which four trillion are being lined up for various projects across the United States. So, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask the support of this board, that our staff is able to place, I know it's not on the MPR or the CRPTA, but we have a US road, a US Highway 319 being widened. It has been widened from all the way down to 363. Now is the chance to join it and to ask those contractors. And I think the study, the good thing is that it does not need a study, but it had a study done in previous years. It simply needs and awaits construction. So I would like to make that as a motion, that we allow staff to act expeditiously in meeting the expansion of 319 all the way into our community. It's also the emergency evacuation route on the coast.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Vice Chair Proctor. Is there a second? Second's been made by Commissioner Cummings. In speakers queue, I've got Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am also concerned about that gap, Commissioner Proctor. I've met with folks in Waukulla County, as we've discussed this in CRTPA. They have been concerned about the widening in Waukulla County, coming into Leon and then narrowing back down. However, our Waukulla County colleagues were also very adamant that they needed funding in their county, and we're a four-county board, and I think we are all supportive of funding going to our, our neighboring counties. So this is something I'm concerned about. My question for county administrator, if I'm remembering correctly, the means of doing an earmark for a specific infrastructure project in Congress, that's virtually gone now, if not very, very challenging. Is that, is that the right assessment with that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It was for a really long time.
Okay.
And now, now it's sort of back in, in different, in a different form. Those projects have, have already been, our congressional delegation have called for those projects. We've gone to the, to the list of projects approved by the board to provide some, some projects to our congressional delegation that fit the criteria that they're looking for. And so that, that's one piece of this. To tell you, Commissioners, which is something that, it's usually good on, on items like this, given the nature of it, is if we brought you back an, an item that could articulate all the moving parts, where this project is, what the status of it, what could be done, as well as what the opportunities are for federal funding and state funding and other things, we could bring that back to you and then seek your direction on, relative to all of those various options, because we do have some, some moving parts, including the fact that we're bringing you back a workshop item on the federal, state, well, the state end of session report, but we also include some, some update on our federal priorities and always give the board, obviously, the opportunity to provide us any other direction. So again, it may be something the board may wish to consider, is to, to give us direction to bring that back to you with a full range of options available to you.
Thank you for that, and I caveated it because I thought earmarks were gone, and then in the discussion about the infrastructure bill that's in negotiations, I guess, and I believe that's going to last, well, what I've heard reported throughout the summer, it does seem like different members are planting their flag for projects. So Commissioner Proctor, I, I'm glad you brought this up. I'm not concerned about that money being allocated in the next four weeks, and so I'm wondering, or two weeks, for our budget workshop, but...
And I was just going to add that, and that current earmark process is not related to the, to the future infrastructure bill.
It's not. It is what's happening right now.
Yes.
Either way, Commissioner Proctor and Commissioner Cummings, I, I could get there if we get that report back during budget or at our next meeting. And I think we are in a good position because that project has been on our list for CRTPA for so long, as you said, and it is a critical evacuation. I think there's a lot of arguments for it, so I'm glad you brought it up. I just would like to see that report from our staff and highlighting what else we've asked our delegation to look at, what are the recommendations, and make sure we have the strongest case possible. So with that caveat, that would be my suggestion for a friendly amendment, just one more step in the next two to four weeks to bring us back an agenda item and move forward at that time.
Perfect.
So it sounds like Vice Chair has accepted that friendly amendment. Commissioner Cummings, as a secondary, would you also accept?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, Chairman, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I accepted it, and that's really what I anticipated as well, the staff.
Okay.
We didn't do a third draft because there are, when you're dealing with federal monies, there are a lot of limitations, so I feel certain that they will address all of those.
Sounds good. Commissioner Cummings, I did have you in the speakers' queues next. Do you have any other additional remarks? I had you in the speakers' queue next. Did you have any additional remarks? Or is this from prosecutor other?
Oh, no. I have no other remarks.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. All's in favor of any other discussion? All's in favor of the motion as stated, or as made by Vice Chair Proctor and seconded by Commissioner Cummings, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven zero. Commissioner, Vice Chair Proctor?
Mr. Chairman, just two other small items. I wanted to ask our county attorney, I read that county commissioners can now receive $1,000 a people running, and I was not all clear. Could you please tell this county commissioner, do we, are we now entitled to, is our previous rule supplanted of $250 limit cap for constitutional candidates? Or have, has the legislature, what, what is the status of our rule? Please.
Madam County Attorney.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So Vice Chair Proctor, you're referring to Senate Bill 1890, which did pass the legislature. It has been signed by the governor. In Article Three, Section 3.4 of the Leon County Charter, this background for everybody, there currently is a limit on the amount of compensation that can be paid in contribution from any contributor, including a political committee, in cash or in kind, in an amount not to exceed $250 per election. What Senate Bill 1890 will do as of July 1, it does not go into effect. I want to be very clear, that law does not go into effect until July 1. At that point, that provision in the charter is preempted, and the amount that is set by statute is $1,000. Okay? So at that point, as of July 1, the threshold amount now, the cap, would be $1,000.
So for those persons who've opened campaign accounts, have received the maximum $250, are they limited to the then acceptance, or can they achieve $750 in addition if people want to give them that amount?
Madam County Attorney.
I don't know the specific answer to that question. I'd rather take a look at it and tell you. What I would definitely recommend to the board at this time, and I will research that and come back to the board with the answer to that question specifically, is please do not accept any amount over $250 prior to July 1. I will look into the question of if someone has already received an amount for the $250, whether that can be supplemented as of the July 1. I think that's what you're asking, Vice Chair Proctor?
Correct.
Okay. I will come back with an answer for the, for the board on that.
Then finally, Commissioners, I wanted to thank you or your support of the loss of my father 11 days ago. You all have been most sweet, most kind, most tender, most empathetic, and our family really appreciates what you, how you've expressed yourselves. Our county staff, some of you at the services, thank you for being there, each of you who were there, city commissioners and others. Our county staff was there all the way, and we felt your love. And on behalf of my mother in particular, and my children, and I, we thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. We've got actually 5:30. So long as there's no objection from the board, why don't we go ahead and take a break and then reconvene at 6 o'clock for the public hearing? And after the end of the public hearing items, you can then finish the items for discussion for the county commissioners. Sound good? All right. Thank you. See you all soon. [coughs]